We did open up earlier this evening and had to go into non-public to deal with a student-related issue. So we are back in public, and I would ask at this time that you all please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to those of you who came up to join us this evening and to those of you viewing from home. Is there any public participation at this time? All ready? We'll go to approval of minutes, January 28th, 2019.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
This is non-public session two, sorry. I didn't know that was specific. Motion by Ms. McElhenney.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion on these. And now I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. February 4th, public session.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these. All set with these? And now I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain as I was absent that evening. Non-public session one from February 4th.
So move.
So move by Ms. McElhenney.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion. And now I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain for some reason. And February...
I don't have those.
Yeah. February 4th, non-public session two.
You're right. Are those in... Those aren't in the... What were they? I'll move to table.
Motion to table these by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, reports.
High school?
Board report.
Would now be a good time to introduce your new administrator?
Well, we're gonna do...
When we get to financials?
Okay, okay. If you would like to come sit down and give your report, you can do that. Synopsis is good.
So last October, the high school did ASVAB testing. We usually opened it up for our seniors. We had room for some juniors and we even had some sophomores who wanted to partake. Looking at the scores, the 44 seniors who took the test, 36 were deemed college and career-ready. So at 82 percent, that is a very nice percentage to have. Our juniors, only because we had two, 50/50, and then our sophomores, I was really pleased to have 75 percent because, you know, they still have those two more years to go, but they were already deemed college and career-ready. March 27th is our PSATs, and so we're doing, and SATs, we're doing some preps with the juniors right now. So every Tuesday and Thursday during real-time, they're split between English and math. So the English department and the math department have split, and then we have some special education teachers that come in and help. And they're working on techniques, and it's been going really, really well. You know, a few bumps because it's a mandatory, but the juniors are really finding it. There, there's so many things in there that they didn't realize, and they've come to us and said that they really appreciate it. So this was a pilot we decided to try this year. More than likely, it's definitely gonna come back and start again in the fall. The sports has a whole bunch in there that you guys can read. I'm very proud of our athletic teams. I've even gotten to see and learn basketball. And I have to admit, my first basketball game ever watching has been Garrett Farmington High School.
She's been inaugurated.
And my students are more than happy to sit in, you know, they don't mind sitting and telling me exactly why, you know, foul shots, all of that. They're, they actually enjoy it.
And you won best seat in the house one night.
I did, and then my kids that were supposed to sit with me...
Wouldn't.
Wouldn't, but you know what? I had the best little seatmate.
I loaned her a child. It was all good.
That's right.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Mine was so exciting. That was awesome.
Yes. And first robotics, it's really exciting because I have gone to the competition, the Battle of the Bay. And it is very professional, and the students are walking around, a lot of them with their, their laptops and their Chromebooks and their badges. So it was really nice that our team now has Chromebooks and not just Chromebooks. We have beautiful cases and donated skins that go on there with our logo, and all of that was really made possible by Ms. Lawton.
Yes.
And the kids are just so excited. They cannot wait to go to their competition, you know, so that they can go around with theirs and, you know, it just...
And they look so spiffy.
They do.
They're so nice looking.
They do. Yes.
He has points for that.
And so I was really proud of them, and going to the Battle of the Bay, I'll be going to their competitions too. Again, my first robotics, and to me, it was just amazing what I saw. So I'm very proud of our students. We are doing a lot of professional development work here at the high school towards competencies, and this year is about more exploration. So just trying to get the teachers comfortable with their block scheduling, what competencies will look like. There was already a book in place last year from the former principal, Dr. Moore. So we kept that one and we added another one called On Your Mark, and it's a grading book. So our PLC groups, they're great because they're not by department, so it's by prep, period. So we can get a lot of different views and a lot of feedback. So we're using certain protocols that we have in place, and there are, oh, it's over there on the wall, but in our neighborhoods. And each, each PLC group has kind of like a landlord in our, in our neighborhood, so we all get to kind of move around. So second semester, we had a whole different set of people move into our neighborhood. That's what we call it. And that seems to be working really, really well. We also have a justice, a restorative justice pilot that we're starting. A lot of teachers went to a great workshop on that. We have books. And that is something that we really just want to explore, bringing in more of the restorative justice practices to try to hopefully keep kids from the tears of having to be suspended or, you know, do more inside intervention. And then Ashley Sheedy has been wonderful, and she's doing some groups after school. And I know there's three of them, but the reason I know these two is because these students seem very excited about the adulting club and the creativity club.
And this is through the Student Assistance Grant.
Yes. And I know there's a third one. It's just that so many have come to me about the creativity and the adulting that, oh, what's the other one?
It's running.
Running. Okay.
She and Melissa will favor doing that one.
Okay. Yeah, the adulting club, right. And a lot of our freshmen want to take part in the adulting club. More power to them. As you can see when you walked in the building, it's Winter Carnival. If you guys get a chance before you leave here, you honestly have to go in the gym. It is the most amazing thing that I have seen.
Great.
So are they still doing the hallways or are they still putting things up in the, on the walls? Are they doing the walls?
They're doing, so each, each grade has their own hallway, and then each of them have their banners put up in the gym. And they are the most beautiful things that, this is gonna be really, really tough to judge. And then, I took my sophomores, we went to the Lakes Region Technology Center, which they were absolutely an amazing group to take. They, they loved going and exploring. So I'm hoping we're gonna see an uptick, like, in how many kids that want to go. And it's gonna change versus the demographics each year. Like, some freshmen that are gonna be sophomores, sometimes there's sophomore slots if we don't have a lot, they're already fighting over who might get to go and do those slots. This, we have a very active freshman class, so I can see as they move up, we'll probably get a lot of draw from that. So they came in, they did the assembly with the kids, and then they got to go. So I think that's gonna be very promising. So there are definitely a lot of things going on at the high school that we could be excited about. I'm very happy.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The restorative classroom workshop, do you know who puts that on?
So that came through the association, the Hampshire Association of Principals.
Okay.
The principal association, so they did that. There are, there are different ones, but this one, we were actually signed up to go in January. Both sessions were full because we were like, we'll go the 28th, we'll go the 29th. They filled up. They actually did another one on Valentine's Day, and we got into that one. And that was like a grant-funded thing, but that one was also full. There is a lot of work. There is a new bill, House bill too, that's coming down around suspensions, and, you know, I haven't read the update on that yet where they're trying to change it. And, you know, if you can keep kids in school, I am more for trying to keep the kids in school versus to keep the kids out of school. So the restorative practices is something, and like, one of the books, Don't Suspend Me, is a great book.
I was just gonna ask you about the books. Like, do we have any extras or no?
Um, I will see if I can get you one.
I would love to read any of them.
Well, you know what? I cannot read all three of them at the same time, and I have three of them, and so I would be more than happy.
I would love to borrow.
Better Than Carrots and Sticks, and to me, Don't Suspend Me are great too, and Don't Suspend Me is a great workbook that we're trying to use.
Thank you.
You're right.
Sorry, any other questions for Ms. Cardinal?
Yes.
I didn't ask that.
I definitely applaud you and your administrative team on being proactive with the restorative justice pilot because, you're right, with our says changing, it will become mandatory for all school districts to adopt this philosophy.
Yes.
So that's wonderful that you're getting a head start on it. You had said about a spike in interest in the technology center. I think that's wonderful. Are we limited to the number of students we can send at this point?
Um, I'm in the process of, Kathy Tatro and I have been playing phone tag all week.
Okay.
I'm in the process of meeting with her to try to figure out what we have for spaces.
Yeah, because we're not limitless.
We had adjusted our budget based on the fact that we had had very, very dwindling interest. That seems to be shifting, so I may need to see what we can do, and I'll have the conversation with Kathy and see what's possible.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, keep us in tune with that because if you're anticipating higher demand than what we're able to send, whether it's because of financial reasons, we could probably try to help with that, or if it's because of the technology center's capacity to allow, because they serve five or six different schools.
Yeah.
Sending schools in addition to their own population, I believe.
Right.
Or maybe Kingswood's one of them. Anyhow, if you can already put some thought into how you will decide who you say no to if it becomes that's the bottleneck is their capacity. But if funding on our end is the, is the bottleneck, I'd love to make sure we have a conversation before we tell any students no, because it really is a wonderful offering up there.
And the students did bring something to my attention that I did not know, is that, so are, this year's juniors that are in like the nursing program, all right, so they go during C Block, which is our real-time. I just thought that it would stay the same, but it shifts. So next year, they're gonna go during A Block.
Okay.
And the bus comes at 6:45 in the morning. And transportation to our school to get on that bus is an issue.
Okay.
But that's something that was just brought up, and I said, well, that's a great thing for me to talk to and bring to the attention, because if that's what's keeping you, then, you know, that's something that we can work around. And apparently, a lot of kids thought that they, they could not take the one they wanted because it's only off our A Block. So, yes, there's, there's some things, they don't really come out and say it until you're trying to talk to them.
Yeah. Wonderful. I love the, the support mentality going on, so thank you. And I just actually want to say, I, I love this report. I love the pictures. I love all the updates, and I actually really would love these to be put like on the website. And if we could even just get pictures of the Winter Carnival and put them on the website or just put them out on social media to some extent. We do so many great things here, and I feel that it's not being extended to the community, and I think that they would love to see some of those.
We have a new website.
Yeah.
And I've been feeding my pictures.
Great.
And I know it hasn't gone to you guys yet, but I'm very excited about this.
Good.
I am, and we, yes.
Good.
So this is gonna be a really great opportunity and gives us so much more to be able to add to that website. And I'll actually be able to update it.
I'll include this report in the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have Henry Wilson's report, but Mrs. Richardson was unable to make it.
Right.
So I think...
Just, it stands?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just, um...
Okay.
There was one thing that I... Oh!
Thank you so much, Mrs. Cardinal.
Sounds like they wanted maybe perhaps do a presentation during their, during one of our March meetings, so maybe our first one or the second one is up in the air because...
Well, the first one would be...
When is the first one?
The first one is March 4th.
Yeah.
That's the day we get back from vacation.
Oh.
So that doesn't give them a whole lot of time.
Okay.
So if we can look at the 18th, that might be better.
We...
Unless we meet the 11th, yeah.
Well, you'll have to design the agenda for that meeting regardless.
Regardless, see, I guess you're right.
Even if you don't afford to design one.
Let's tentatively put that on there then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's been a while since we've had a sort of a presentation during our school board meeting.
I know. Excited.
I want to accept her report for inclusion into the minutes.
Okay.
Despite not presenting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second? Yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an introduction. I'll allow you to do the introduction.
Absolutely. I'm very, very pleased to introduce Jana Mellon, who is our new business administrator. I'm thrilled not, I'm thrilled to have somebody sitting here next to me now because that's, seat's been vacant for a little bit. She's been with us exactly eight days, and it's been an interesting eight days. She's had a, um, the introduction to Farmington has included how to get around when the technology goes down because we're preparing for a major overhaul, and gave her time to investigate some files that she might not have seen quite as soon. So it's been, it's been good. She's been a phenomenal help to me already. She has a tremendous work ethic and, and a wealth of knowledge that she's already been able to come in and say, okay, so here's some areas where we might be able to improve this. What do you think about this protocol? If we put this procedure in place? And I'm like, great, slow down. She's doing a great job. So I'm very excited to have her.
Well, welcome aboard. We're happy to have you here for this.
I am delighted to be here. They have a great staff over there and very knowledgeable. They have been so accommodating and so helpful. So I'm really excited to be here, and I look forward to continuing to work with everybody, so.
We're happy to have you.
She makes really good cupcakes.
Really?
So the financials that you have, I apologize at Don Comby that the beginning of the month came and went, and they weren't in your pocket, so I wanted to make sure that you had the copies before these go to the Budget Committee. Not a whole lot of remarkable things at this point, but did want to make sure that you had these to see. We are still continuing the practice that we had begun with allowing the over expenditure of a line to be reflected here and then do the shifts beneath that so that you can see where things are moving to and from. We do have one line item transfer that was done at the end of last week that I will bring to you at the next board meeting.
Okay.
That was one of those, as, as our technology was being a little persnickety over the last couple of days, we didn't get that added to the, the drive that you have, but we will get that up there. And that was around the additional work that we needed to have done with the sprinkler system and that we'd already brought to you. So, um, we will have at the meeting on the 4th, the financials through the end of February for you. So I ran these as of the end of January, even though the date stamp on them is, is this. So this, this is what you would have received the beginning of February.
Yeah. Will you do that for consistency of getting a snapshot of the calendar month for comparison purposes? It's not so that we don't have the latest information?
No, not at all. And then that way you can see...
The close of each month.
What the Budget Committee sees at their next meeting. To remind you that I will not be here for the Budget Committee meeting next week, but I will bring, you, you did make a motion, and we will have that written so that you can take that with you.
Okay. The, at last night's town budget additional public hearing that the Budget Committee needed to schedule, not norm, it's not typical, it was regular, but it was necessary for the sake of the police department being able to spend from their special revenues fund. Anyhow, it's not school-related, but at the close of that hearing, the committee decided not to hold a February meeting.
Oh, okay.
But we will provide the reports anyway because by law, we really should be, stay consistent now that we've reviewed them.
We can put these up online.
Great. Wonderful, thank you. So just to let you know, you won't be missing anything.
Okay. Good to know.
Just a quick question regarding the financials. I'm noticing a lot of overages in a lot of the lines already. A bit early for the...
Um, some of these are where we've done, well, can you give me an example? Because I don't...
Um, health insurance for principal, page 20, is just the one that happened to be on line 509.
Okay, let me take a look.
Is that the right one I'm looking at? Oh, 508. And we're over, over by 17,000.
Okay, remember that you have different staff who are taking different plans, and that was budgeted based on existing staff last year.
Yeah, like I said, it was just the one-page amount, but I mean, I've seen...
Or you'll see, I think you'll see a big grouping of overages, but then there's a corresponding underage is special education. In the salary lines, you'll see some overages, however, the behavior positions are all zero.
Okay.
But I mean, even like... So that'll explain a lot of different line items that are associated with that situation. Paraeducators were understaffed at this moment, aren't we? We have a shortage of paraeducators, so you'll see an overage on those salaries and benefits.
Even on like math supplies and new equipment?
Some of those we, we were, adjustments are happening, so we will get those to you.
All right.
Yeah, perhaps just an idea for next month, the next time we have to record certain ones, Mrs. Mellon gets familiar with the different situations going on, comparing what was budgeted 18 months ago versus what our reality is now. Just maybe a one-pager explaining some of those bigger deltas.
Sure.
Okay. That would be helpful, right?
I think so. I just figured it's pretty early in the, I, I figured we'd get at least a couple more months before I started seeing so many, but...
But our total bottom line isn't over?
No.
Oh, no.
No, no.
No.
Any other questions about, did you have anything to highlight on the other two or...
Not really. We are looking at, on Monday and Tuesday that we return, we have a federal funds onsite review from the DOE. So we've been spending quite a bit of time getting ready for that to make sure that we have everything in place as we're doing the technology overhaul over vacation, knowing that printing and accessibility may be somewhat limited, getting all of that in place so that it's ready to go. And I'm pretty confident that we're in a good place for that as far as our documentation and having everything ready when they arrive.
So you're saying it's scheduled to be...
Yes. And then in March, Plodzik and Sanderson will be arriving to finish our single audit and finish up our, our 18 pieces. Initially, they had given us a letter saying that they were aiming for the end of February. I think we're gonna miss the end of February. It'll be into March.
Okay. So I'll give a heads up to the folks that are waiting on that. So you said the federal funds onsite review for the Department of Education is scheduled to begin the first week of March?
It will be March 4 and 5.
Yeah, great. Oh, wow.
Yes, yes. Yes. She's off the dock with floaties. She's doing really well.
Factism by five.
Right? She's very experienced.
Any other questions about financials or anything else? No? All right, new business. Ooh, I was excited to see this on the agenda. I can't even tell you how excited I am to see it on the agenda. Nature's Classroom. Who's speaking to this?
I can, I can.
Come on up.
Are you here to do that?
Is that one...
You're gonna be caught in the magic chair.
Sure.
As long as you don't go poof when you sit down, we're good for you. All right. So...
Hi, Mrs. D'Angelo.
Hi, I'm Rachel D'Angelo, the seventh-grade science teacher. So this started because I used to run Nature's Classroom and Freedom, and my husband now works for Camp Cody. Camp Cody is its own entity that kind of rented from Nature's Classroom. They evidently bought the franchise for Freedom. Is that interesting?
Interesting.
They bought another one too in, in Cape Cod. So anyway, they contacted me because I had put out there that I would be interested in doing it, but I know it's pretty pricey. So initially, he contacted me and told me that the price for a three-day would be $195 a student, and I said, that is just not gonna work this late in the game because this is May. We're talking May 8, 9, 10. And I said, there's just no way our kids can do this. I just know they won't be able to. I was like, you just need to give me your bottom line. Truly, like, what is the lowest price you can give me? And he went down twice. The lowest he went to was 120. 120 a kid for three days. And I was like, we might be able to do that. So now, obviously, the first thing I wanted to do was see if this was really doable. So I put out like a, I don't know what you'd call it.
Survey?
A survey, there you go. Put a survey out. I talked to kids and just kind of fielded out a little bit. Oh, have you heard of Nature's Classroom? And they seemed excited, so I said, okay, let me see what we think. So on the survey, because I actually had more than one student raise their hand and ask me, would it be possible for like my parents to volunteer to like donate money to help for kids that couldn't go? And I was like, and I had more than one kid say that, so I was like, let me put that on the survey. So the survey basically said, who are you? Can you go? Could you afford the 120? Could you afford some of the 120? If you can't afford the 120, check here, and if you can and you would be willing to donate, what would you be willing to donate? And I said to every kid, please understand, I just need to know because I can't commit to Nature's Classroom and bring this to the board if, if we're way out of the ballpark for this year at least. When I got, when I sent these out, I so far to this day have all of them back except one because the kid was really sick and he hasn't been in for a while. And of what I got back, we are actually in the green, like $370. That's before doing any fundraising according to who can pay and who would donate. I know, I was like, are you serious? I was so excited. And a lot of parent, like the, what I've been hearing is so positive. I had very, I had like maybe six to eight kids who needed help, and then I had like 13 people who offered to pay more than what their student needed. thirteen people who offered to pay more than what their student needed. I also had staff members who were willing to pay for kids to go. There were six kids who opted out in total from what I got back. A lot of them, I notice, are kids that have poor attendance anyway. One has a real issue with sleeping away from home and one has seizures, so doesn't want to be away from home, nor does the parent want him there either, so the reasons are good reasons. The kids that we were worried about financially and stuff, they pulled through and they, and the ones that couldn't afford it, said it, and we could cover it with what I got back. So if you don't know what Nature's Classroom is, it is an educational phenomenal experience that our school had done for many, many, many years, and for some reason it went away. And I have such a strong connection with that facility, as does my husband, so we both, if I can get good deals like this, I would love to be able to do it again, or at least try to bring it back. They offered us an awesome half-week. It would be May eight, nine, and ten. There's another school there, they're only there for the first three days. They would be a crossover with us for lunch, that's probably it. And then we had the whole, we had the whole facility for the last three days on our own, and it is massive and beautiful. And we're talking, and we'd only bring about fifty kids, but we would be looking at like a one-to-eight ratio for like their field group time, which is phenomenal. It's a great deal.
Yes.
A really great deal. As you see in the paperwork though, he sent me the original, and then I flipped out, texted him, was like, whoa, we didn't talk one-ninety-five here. I was like, even with the discount that it says in here, it would still be like one-fifty. That wasn't what you said to me. So there's a follow-up email in the back where he was like, oh, you're right. And I go, I need that in writing. Can you please send it to me? So it says, you're right, it's one-twenty a kid. That's a mock schedule that you should have too. I think Ruthelle gave you guys copies of it.
Did that go? Oh, it did. I'm sorry. Pass it along.
So there's a mock schedule, I'll show you mine too. You guys can check it out, but I kind of just use you an idea what in three days would look like.
Oh, my daughter's excited.
Really exciting.
And where is Nature's Classroom?
It's in Freedom on, in Freedom on, yeah, like forty minutes, forty-five minutes.
I thought this was out of state.
Nope.
I went for fifteen straight years when I was an educator here, and I can tell you that when I bump into former students, it is usually one of the first things that comes up in conversation is, do we still go? It was the greatest time of my life. Yeah, it went away because someone made the decision that they didn't want the school to go, and I still think that that person should be very sorry that they did that. So, love to see it return. You know, there should be a five-day trip, but even a three-day trip, I think, is fantastic. It's just a great experience for kids. So I'm excited. I personally would like to make the motion. I normally don't do that, and I allow the board to, but I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Kittle. Any further discussion?
Just a question, does anybody know why we stopped?
It was an, no, it was an administrative decision by the principal of that building at the time not to continue the program.
And you obviously have Mrs. Richardson's support and Mr. Coco's support.
Absolutely, yeah.
You would do all of that before.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so have I. The only thing that I would say is that the other cost, I think we need to figure out is transportation.
Which I, I'm gonna talk to the PTA, because they've always been so unbelievable about helping out with stuff like that, so.
Seventh grade has money budgeted in the PTA.
I will, and I, we also are so willing to do fundraising too, but we only have till May, but seeing as I have it in, I think they would be okay if we didn't, I want to pay it in full. I would love to. But I think, I don't think we're gonna have, I think we're gonna get it.
It's just to get to Freedom on Wednesday and then get home on Friday, right?
Right. We'll end up with two buses. It'll be two buses down, drop stuff off, drop kids off, and then head back.
So we'll just need to figure out timing with out of district, because to take two buses out of circulation when we're down a driver, we'll just have to figure out logistics. Not saying it can't happen, and, you know, we have worked out, worked with other districts, okay, we need to cover this, can you do that? And, you know, it's, we'll figure out a way. But that, right now, is probably the only barrier, the only thing we have to kind of jump over to get there.
And I would just, you know, go on record as saying, if this experience is well-received, as I'm sure it will be, I have no doubt, and this is something that the seventh grade or any particular grade level wants to continue next year, obviously, there'd be earlier fundraising opportunities. I mean, kids used to earn their whole way by just various fundraising. I don't think you have to come before the board every time. I mean, I get that it's new again and it's a sleepover trip, but if this is something that the building administration, the superintendent's on board with, I don't see the need for that. It's in-state.
It was more to, we wanted to highlight the fact that we want to bring it back, and this is a good way to get it out and to let folks know that, you know. I really didn't question that you would be on board with this. I was pretty confident that that was gonna be a good, but wanted to make sure that this was something that was out there, and...
Cabin ball. Anyway.
Want a chaperone? That's funny. Well, that's why I ended up here, was through Nature's Classroom, but it's one of those things too, I think.
We didn't recruit you.
You did.
Yeah.
Totally. I think some of the, some of the, it's not gonna be easy, the chaperones, we all have little kids, the teachers in the seventh grade have little kids, but I think, I think that with the help of some of the other staff, we've already kind of talked about, I think Laurel, myself, will probably be consistence up there. I think Bertrand would volunteer to do that, and Mr. Moser, so that would be two men, two females, and it would kind of work out, I think, between the other teachers driving up and going back if they have to. That's the, the chaperone coverage is gonna be interesting, but I think, I think we got it.
It's awesome, I'm so excited.
Don't be shy about tapping into some of our retired teachers who still have a clear background check on file.
And, you know, we have a number of families with volunteer clearance, so.
Okay, I will keep that in mind, but I, I think the exciting thing being that it's gonna be fun to watch someone else, they are so different when they're outside and they're learning outside, and they're like, it's gonna be fun to watch that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Can't, just can't stress how awesome it is.
It is awesome.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra work and the cost and all of your colleagues that helped.
Okay, we have a policy to look at.
And actually, there are two.
There are two, okay. I will say that Mrs. Morn, when she did call and say that she wouldn't be able to be here, so the Policy Committee, are you still, do you still have sort of a calendar list of what you're looking at when? Didn't she?
Yes, it's kind of died a little bit because our last couple of meetings we had scheduled, we've had to cancel. We don't actually have our next meeting scheduled yet.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not necessarily gonna relay Mrs. Morn's idea, but I'll have her bring it up at the next meeting. Just, she had an idea of, she was looking at some policies that were pretty, you know, as we know, there are some still that are pretty old.
We have a list of three hundred policies that we still need to get through. We said if we could get it done in one year, it would take, we would have to do twelve per Policy Committee meeting, and we are lucky if we can get through three.
Yeah.
Because, you know, each one's, there's a real conversation, so we're looking at about two years worth of work.
The two that you have before you, DID is one that we don't currently have, and as we are getting things in place to meet with our DOE friends, this is one that they would like to see. And this is boilerplate. This is a fairly standard policy. It takes what we had for our surplus policy and also pulls in our other procedures into a single policy, which is what is now recommended by the School Awards Association. You have a very good example of where this comes in.
I do. The second day in the district, I took a tour with Ruthellen of the annex.
The place where old things go to die, yes.
And the first thing I noticed when I walked down the stairs was an enormous stand mixer, a commercial stand mixer. And I said, what's that doing down here? Because that, they're worth a lot of money. And so we did a little research, and it appears that that mixer, I forget the name of the previous food service company prior to Cafe Services, they had requested that the district remove it from the kitchen. The mixer is fantastic, it works great, but it's an older mixer, and it predates some of the safety protocols for kitchen equipment. It does not have a mixer guard on the bowl. Current mixers will not let the mixer start up until the guard is in place because of the paddles and such. So the kitchen, I met later that day with our current Food Services Director, and he said, you know, we'd really like to have it back in the kitchen because we miss it, and my company doesn't have a policy about it. And I said, well, I gotta make a phone call. So I just got ahold of them today, I spoke with our liability carrier, and she highly recommended that we do not return it to the kitchen because of, even though they have their own workers' comp, their, our equipment belongs to us, and if we had some type of accident, knowing that there was reason that it was removed. So there stands this mixer, and the market value for the mixer, not for use in a school, but some places that don't have to follow those safety protocols, a smaller home kitchen thing where they have a smaller shop, it's a twelve-hundred-dollar mixer.
Excellent.
So I said, well, what's our disposal policy? And we started, it kind of morphed into this, but, you know, that's one of the items that they really would like another mixer. We haven't budgeted for a mixer, but certainly if we could sell that one and get something that has the proper safety protocols in place, I think it would be much appreciated and it would be an asset for the kitchen team. So that's pretty much the...
That started some of that.
That started some of the dialogue about how we do things and what we do, and the thresholds, the dollar thresholds. And the capitalization threshold, that's actually, the DOE does want certain things, that's actually our financial auditors. They want to know that so that we can properly depreciate our items. So there probably should be some dialogue around that, because there's the theory of the items in aggregate amounting to our threshold versus a single item. And I believe this boilerplate, they do say like-kind aggregate purchases, but if you think of ten thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks, are you really gonna capitalize a Chromebook? Because they're really a throwaway kind of item. So we do have to kind of decide what, what things will capitalize going forward.
Okay. And, and looking at it in terms of what we need to, not that we aren't going to maintain an inventory on our Chromebooks and know where they are, but as far as a capitalized inventory and keeping those additional records for audit purposes, it's that much more to be tracking and figuring depreciation on, as opposed to just where is it, where was it purchased, having this piece and doing the full depreciation each year and reporting that. So right now, we don't have this set in policy, and that's where we're looking at some thresholds that make sense. It doesn't change our threshold around the five hundred dollars, that's still our bidding threshold, which is still, it's a fair, it's a lower threshold compared to some districts, but that's fine. But as we look at the depreciation piece, you know, where are we looking at there? And so, you know, whether we look at ten thousand, seven thousand, five thousand is lower than most of the policies that we looked at as we were looking across. We looked at Oyster River and Epping and Exeter and a number of the Alton, so smaller districts, larger districts, similar, and they all started seven to ten thousand dollars for their threshold. So again, it's what you're comfortable with, but we need to have something in place.
And that's not to say that we wouldn't still, a building inventory is something different than a capitalization thing. We would still have inventory records of things like desks and things, but we may choose to consider a desk a replacement cycle item whereby the broken ones get replaced every year, so we're not necessarily tagging, you know, individual desks, but we look at a sum quantity of desks. This is what we have, and that's the value of that.
So I move to accept this as a final read.
Second.
But I do have some questions with that. So if I read this correctly and based on what our current policies and practices are, there will be no such thing as the board making a motion and second in approving an item as surplus, right? Because it says that any items remaining unsold will be declared. Would we be taking that action of declaring it?
Well, it would be, we certainly could institute the procedure that if it's unsold, we bring it back to you for you to declare, if that's the way you want that done.
But the way it's written now, it wouldn't require our intervention or a blessing at any point.
But it wouldn't be put out to sale before, without your blessing.
Okay.
Why does it say that?
Because it says single, right, that's where I don't see, just comparing what our current practice and current policies are. I'm not saying it's, but we can add a bullet to say if it's worth a thousand dollars, the school board needs to declare it surplus before it goes out for sale, or something like that, if that's what the board is comfortable with. That's why I said I'd move to approve as final with some questions and see if anybody wants to make an amendment.
Yeah, I'll make an amendment to include that. What do you think the dollar amount, the thousand?
Are we talking?
Currently, we do anything.
Right, but do we want to have just?
I think that's why we have that graveyard in the basement of the annex.
Right, exactly, but I'm thinking, so I'm thinking anything less than a thousand, we don't, I mean, what, I'm not sure what the...
I don't think we'll hire five thousand.
You know, because we've not had to deal with this really.
I would say the majority of things that we're going to be disposing, some things are saleable and some things, you know, are the same things that every other district's trying to get rid of.
Yeah. This is what I see, the real-life kind of behavior that having to come and declare surplus with your board drives, you know, just thinking of, you're very diligent, both of you, and you'll do this in your own right, but for whomever does this job ten years down the road or forty years down the road, if it's not you.
Forty years, it probably won't be me.
It drives the behavior, yes, exactly. So it drives the behavior of going and assessing a value, you know, at least looking at, for example, well, I don't want to broadcast some things that I think are of great value in that basement.
Well, we've got that mixer.
Exactly. That's a perfect example. If you didn't need to assess what might the value of this item be before deciding what to do, you could have looked at it and said, ah, I think it's only worth five hundred dollars, I can go ahead and sell it.
Right.
Right.
You know, but then come to find out, you needed to properly do that, because if it was worth more than whatever dollar amount we're going to assess now and put into our policy, you'd be in violation of a policy.
Right. So, I mean, you could certainly have a procedural line in there that, there needs to be some type of...
We could, I'm thinking out loud, but we could bring a list of the items to the board as like a, an aggregate, telling you what the values might be that we're looking at. And if there's an item on there, like if it's a broken, one-armed school desk, we know there's no resale value in that, but if there are things that we have questions about, we could do a little market research and attach that to the list so that you can kind of see what, what we're looking at for most items. I mean, we could certainly...
And if there were pieces on there that you felt you could get a better valuation on, you could table that piece and come back and say, well, I researched it and I think it's worth this.
Feel comfortable changing your motion to a first read? It just seems to be like there's gonna be more work done to it.
But if it's a first read, does it give them the okay to go ahead and proceed with? Yeah, this doesn't conflict with any of our current policies, it's just streamlined, is that right?
Right, but is this something specifically they're going to be looking for?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
But to answer your first question about capitalization thresholds, I like the hundred thousand in aggregate.
And actually, that purchases didn't come out right. It says purchase, and we're not doing fish?
No.
And just point to clarity, the way that this reads, the capitalization threshold is ten thousand per item or for like-kind aggregate purchases for all classes except infrastructures. So it's saying ten thousand per aggregate, and I just want to revisit that point, because if you buy ten thousand Chromebooks from a generally accepted accounting standpoint, it's probably not the best idea to capitalize on something over a period of time that you're not gonna have use of in three years, so two years, depending on the lifespan of these assets. So that, that's the only part that I would think you might want to think about.
Increase that, ten thousand.
The aggregate piece.
Oh, I understand. So to strike or for like-kind aggregate?
Yeah, or else raise, or break it off from the single asset and make it a different item, you know, make a different threshold.
Ten thousand dollars per item or like-kind aggregate of twenty-five thousand or something like that.
Wouldn't you recommend?
Well, you don't want, you don't want to go too high. I would think, you know, we can spend, I'd say twenty thousand if you were getting a mass of something, but that would be a lot of, a lot of things. A lot of stuff, and, you know, chances are, honestly, what you would do from a budgetary standpoint is you would stage those kind of purchases anyway, so you would get some in one year, some in the next, you know, if it was something that was a disposable kind of thing, you would have a cycle. So I don't know how practicable that would be. That said, I don't know how historically, how this district has...
Yeah, and I think of big purchases, recent comes to mind as our new server, but that is something that we would capitalize.
Right, because that's a single item too.
At one time, yeah. That's a single item that's over the ten thousand dollar threshold.
Right.
And that's a specialized server. Most of our, a number of our servers wouldn't hit that mark. That was the broadcast server that would. And if it's, you know, the infrastructure assets, if there's a, if we put on an addition, if we, you know, those assets would be at a hundred thousand.
Okay. Okay.
Right, so we have a motion in a second, then you, did you have her amendment?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion. I'll change my motion to accepting as a first read with this clause, the capitalization thresholds clause edited to say, we'll first put a dollar sign in front of the 10,000. Or for like-kind aggregate purchases at $20,000, set at $20,000.
Okay, so we have a motion for a first read as amended. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick question. When you sell, goes into the general fund? There's no, but we don't have.
It would come in as revenue into the general fund.
And then I do want to make one more amendment. On the third bullet under disposal, and whenever possible, items will be disposed in an environmentally safe manager, manner. I'd like to add that whenever possible, items will be recycled, else will be disposed in an environmentally safe manner.
Okay, I mean, I took that to mean recycling, but, yeah.
We'll always try to recycle where we can. I guess is my point.
I actually think that bullet kind of states it when it says environmentally safe.
And it's, and it's the.
That's my impression. Two very different things.
It can be. And it's what's available, because sometimes recycling incurs more cost than you can sell it for, depending upon what it is that you're recycling. There are, the market for recycled goods has closed fairly dramatically with the sanctions against China. And so now we're almost having to pay to get rid of stuff instead of having them pay us to take it.
Okay, so then if you ever run into that situation, you would just come with, we want to go outside of policy here on this one?
Or, or say, you know, whenever possible, so it's possible, but it will incur costs. Is this something the board wants to incur, or shall we do it this way?
I guess just a question I have. You have disposal of fixed assets slash school property, and then you have school property's disposal procedure, but the only time it mentions donating items is just if, to charitable organizations. If it's considered, where did I just see the word? Obsolete items. We don't, we only can donate obsolete items?
Well, if it's saleable, the directive has been, you know, revenue first if you can, and if not, then find a good home for it. Certainly, I can say I have a saleable item, is this some, and I also have an opportunity to donate this, but would you like us to do it?
I would just, if it can't be, you know, if we don't have a buyer, I'm just thinking perhaps. We could also make a donation under school property, and the first one also an option.
Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion in a second. There's a first read as amended. All those in favor?
Aye. Is it as a first read or a final read?
Nope, she amended it to a first read.
I did, so that we could determine if we need a fourth bullet under disposal for school board.
Okay. When would you need this for the DOE though?
The March 4th meeting, Monday morning.
Oh, and her next meeting is Monday. Okay, so now I move to accept this as a final read as amended.
Well, actually, though, I think, I think we.
We could take this, that this has gone as a first read. It will be going back to the board as a final read Monday night. They'll be back Tuesday morning. We can say, here's what we are, here's what we've put into place.
I would draw mine.
And the capitalization piece, again, that goes with our financial audit, which is not scheduled until the end of March. So those number pieces are, you know, are not needed for the DOE part. They just want a demonstration of a policy.
Okay, thank you.
And so the next policy that I, the drug-free workplace, we have that one. It goes back to December 1992 and was readopted in 2004. And so we do have one in place, so in that we're covered, but looking at the date, we kind of went, hmm, this might be an update we could do. The one that is, and it does have a fairly fun typo in it, but anyway. The other, and actually, these were stapled backwards. I apologize. It's supposed to be the, if you read it from the back page forward, the new policy is on the front, the pieces, so it's the two pages. The legal references would be removed, but I left them so that you would be able to see the history of where that came from. So there are several legal references that have been updated by the School Boards Association. I did remove an optional paragraph regarding a needle exchange program, because I didn't feel that that was something we were looking to do at this point, so. The rest of these are fairly standard. And it does say that there is an implementation and review that needs to be done biannually. So this would be one that needs to be on a revisit cycle a little bit more frequently than 2004. Which is why I brought it back to you.
I move to accept this draft as a final read.
Motion for a final read, second by Ms. McElhany. Discussion?
Should we ever have a situation where we need a syringe exchange service on campus? You know, they did provide, the School Boards Association does provide some legally friendly language to do that, and you would, we would adopt it as specific to the individual school impacted and specific to the individual service that we're authorizing. So that would mean a change in policy and then change back when the service is no longer needed. Keeps us on our toes.
Any other discussion on this? Hearing now, a call for all those in favor? Old business, I don't see anything under old business. Do we have old business?
There wasn't anything under old business.
The board have any old business?
No, we covered Budget Committee, one Budget Committee item we had.
I did have one other, sort of other, and it is, I guess this is sort of old business. Looking to do the public hearing for the Technology and Special Education Trust Funds. I need to do the public notice. Originally, I was thinking, oh, doing the math forward, Monday, the 11th, and then I went, oh, that's not a board meeting night. So certainly could make that the 18th, but I don't know if that's where you want it. We're a little close to try to do it for the 4th. So it could be the 18th. I could put it to the beginning of April if that seems to be a better flow. We'll still be okay as far as our timing, but I wanted to make sure that that was something that's.
Well, the 18th, the board will be restructuring.
Yes.
Because that'll be the Monday after elections.
Well, it's a little too soon for the 4th. I mean, unless you want to just do a special one on the 11th, right?
Would that be necessary?
It wouldn't have to be. If I were to post it, if it runs this weekend, we'd be close. If I can get it in tomorrow, it probably wouldn't run until Saturday. So we're within the seven days, but it's close if there's any glitch with the paper. To do it for the 4th.
What would be the glitch?
If they were to bump something for, you know, space or whatever, but now that they have things online, it isn't as likely to get bumped.
Now, we could plan for the 4th unless there is a glitch, and then the 18th, I guess.
But, yeah, well, and then if I had a rerun, because if I put it in for a certain, you know, the dates kind of have to go by. It would be another $150 to rerun it, so.
What's the board's, my?
Let's try for the 4th.
I think we've, yeah.
Try for the 4th, okay. We'll do.
All right. When we do the agenda, though, we gotta remember to put public participation before the non-publics, just because last time, this happened too, and I forgot to call for public participation. Again, I just kind of, I read it in order. It used to be up there. Public participation. We have a former staff member and former board member in the room. You know, nothing?
Coming to remind myself if I missed it or not.
Oh. Don't judge it on one meeting.
No, I judge it on the temperature outside.
Oh. All right. Our next meeting will be Monday, March 4th, and also a public hearing that evening, so. 6:30, right?
Public hearing for 6:30 or for 6?
No, that's, because then we.
Let's go for what, an hour?
Because then we just, if nothing's happening, we just sit here lifeless for half an hour.
I can do 6:30, that's fine.
No, really, that's what happened before. We can't, we can't move on to the agenda, because we can't start.
You can't start the meeting, so you're kind of looking at the camera going.
Yeah, no, I could leave it open on that. Let's just do it at 6:30, so. Thank you to those of you who joined us from home, and those of you who came out this, this evening. We'll see you on March 4th. Take a motion to go into non-public session two for personnel. So moved by Ms. McElhany.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kittle. All those in favor, by roll. Aye. Good night.